Okay. Um, I'm sure it's one of your things. Um, my public announcement is this Thursday, November 8th, the Laverne Correlations of Cleveland, this is LB3C in South Cleveland, at Rock of the Fifth Church in the Bush Hall at 6:00 p.m., which will be a six month report from Mayor Jim Edlund, as well as an open DNA. So we're inviting all of the residents to come and look into the mountain. He's been elected, well, elected and some other, but chosen as mayor by the council. And I'd say that's enough to inform them and say to me, as well as ask questions of people who may be coming up in the future, and we can have a private conversation maybe in the gathering now. So, Laverne residents, welcome to the break. Thank you.
Thank you. Did everybody get that? December 8th at, uh...
Six.
At...
6:00 p.m.
Is it six?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, 6:00 p.m.
Was it six? I thought it was eight.
No, it's six.
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m. At the Church of Woodhills?
Uh, the one on Wheeler Church?
Yeah. Rock of Woodhills.
Rock of the Fifth, yeah.
That's on, that's on Wheeler Avenue.
Right.
Right. They'll be posted on the website. Sorry, just, I wasn't prepared for that one. Uh, I, one go back. I want to thank, uh, council member Mayor Pro Tem Crosby for filling in for me. He did a fantastic job and represented our city well, as he always does, but, uh, I do appreciate that. I know when I leave and go somewhere that got capable hands to, to push the city forward, so thank you. That's all.
Don't leave.
Okay, consent calendar. Do we have any, anything pooled? Mr. Duff?
No, nothing.
Any questions, comments? Then I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I second.
Third? Vote please.
No, the approval five.
Vote. Very good. We move to other matters. Ordinance number 1113. Mr. Duff?
Uh, City Attorney Bob Kress will give the staff report.
Mr. Kress?
Thank you. Um, as our office was dealing, um, in the past few months with some property nuisance matters, um, we realized that, um, we could tighten up, um, our ordinances, um, to, to get to cost recovery. If we reach a point with a property nuisance case where bottom line, the city either needs to do the work or contracts to have the work done, um, the ordinance that's presented tonight, um, in, in accordance with state law, um, makes that cost recovery, uh, process a little bit tighter, uh, and, and easier to, to get to. There are some other provisions that are presented as part of this ordinance that basically is existing language that the city already has, uh, but it's, it's all presented as a package. Um, but that's the purpose. Um, and again, it's just, uh, one of those ordinances, uh, that has been in the code book for a number of years and, um, it, it was time to take a look at it and, as I said, tighten it up a bit. So happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Any questions for council?
Yeah, I do have, um...
Councilor Johnson?
The ordinance talks about an appeal procedure and a hearing by Board of Appeals. So there's no discussion or anything in here about who comprises that Board of Appeals.
Okay, the, the Board of Appeals, um, the, the next item on your agenda, you'll be adopting the updates to the building and fire codes. And there is a section somewhere in the municipal code that when we adopt the county building code by reference, it says that the Board of Appeals shall be the city council. So it's, it is a code.
Okay. Any other questions for council? Or, no, for council?
Whoa. Sorry.
This is just a request for, um, when we have things like this come forward, um, in the future, could, is it possible to get a red line document to, to delineate what has or hasn't changed?
Before and after.
Just so we see what was there before and what was after. I'm fine with, um, the purpose and the intent of this, and I, that I think it will be helpful to have that in the future.
Well, I'll pass that on to the next city attorney.
Thank you. Please do.
Mayor Pro Tem Crosby?
Yeah, because my question was what's added, what's not added to that? And finally found the pieces added. I think it's very appropriate, especially, um, when, uh, we are just dealing with, um, abatement, um, from the, the golf course and, um, where now we can actually, uh, charge other fees for that too, of our, uh, our city workers, our attorneys, if they have to write that, those fees would be part of that too. So I, I think this really brings up date and, uh, it's very appropriate so that we are gaining, um, appropriateness. What, what our city puts out, we should be getting back from, from the people. So thank you.
Um, I think we will a public comment. Any public comment on this item? Thinking about the pork roast. I know. We will close public comment and bring it back up to the dais. Uh, just a real quick comment. I, I want to mirror the comments. I think it's important, as we've been going through all of our different, uh, ordinances and also our fee structures, it's extremely important to stay up to the times. Uh, fee structures pay for the services that we have in this community. I think it's extremely important that we capture, not gouge, but capture every possible cent that we can in our ordinances and also in our fee structures. As when I first got on council, that was my first question, how long has this been our fee structure? And it's been that way for a long time. And we're finally, last number of years with our council and the previous council starting to review those and going over that. So I appreciate that. But I do like the red line because I can see it before and after, and it gives us that idea of what we're actually doing and what we're adding. So, um, now, we're going to take this one at a time. Is that correct, Mr. Kress? Because, or are we doing both?
Well, I'm not...
You're not doing the other one?
I'm doing the other.
Your line.
So...
We're going to do this on by itself then. So, uh, any other questions for, uh, council to staff?
Um, you, you mentioned, you mentioned that, is it in the next ordinance that it lists the city council? Because I didn't see it there either.
No, it's, it's in the municipal code because, uh, I mean, you always adopt the Ollie Kelly, uh, building code, and there is, there is a provision that says that the Board of Appeals shall be the city council.
Without a motion?
Um, I move to approve the city council, introducing waive further reading and place on first reading ordinance number 1113, amending chapter 940 of Title IX of the Laverne Municipal Code relating to property maintenance and public nuisance. Second?
Second? Vote please. Motion carries.
And that was approved by all.
Thank you.
It's right there.
It's, uh...
Yeah. Under, where? Protest.
Next item, we have, uh, urgency ordinance 1114, uh, El Laco Building Code.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. Yes, this item is the urgency ordinance to, to adopt the 2023 Los Angeles County Building Code and the 2022 Fire Code and Green Building Code by reference. Uh, this evening's recommendation by staff is exactly that, to adopt the code, the latest code. Uh, code cycle runs on a three-year cycle, so these codes that are before you this evening will, uh, replace codes that were, uh, adopted in 2019. Uh, those codes are the California Building Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Chemical Code, uh, and Residential Code as amended by the county, uh, adoption of those codes recently this November 15th. A few highlights, uh, excuse me, there's two more codes that I skipped past. Uh, there are, uh, two codes that have not been adopted by the county that we're, uh, offering up tonight for consideration. That is the State Green Building Code and the Fire Code. And if I may outline why, uh, the county has not actually, uh, adopted their amendments to the Fire Code as of yet. That's expected to take place sometime in the first quarter of 2023, so expect that to come back in the future. Uh, and the Green Code, uh, specifically, the county has adopted amendments that, uh, are, are more stringent than are necessary. And so what we're doing is adopting the minimum for the Green Code so as to not burden property owners and developers with, uh, extensive costs that, uh, might come out of those, those proposed changes that are in the county version. Um, I'd like to touch on one last piece of this, uh, urgency, uh, ordinance. There is a reason why we're taking a, a different path on this one. As I mentioned, uh, the county recently adopted their code, uh, November 15th. Um, it's been our practice to adopt their code by reference, and so those codes have only just recently existed. Um, and taking the standard, um, adoption schedule for the normal ordinance, we would not have time to make our deadline, which is due, uh, January 1, 2023. So, uh, that concludes my report. This evening I have Ray Mutau with my office, as well as Mr. Montagami from the, uh, Fire Department, should there be any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Holland? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Looking on page five, uh, it mentions the storage of explosive and blasting agents. Uh, how does that affect, um, the storage of ammunition, uh, black powder, um, for enthusiasts that may be storing those agents at home?
Sure. I, I will defer that question to Mr. Montagami.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you. So the ordinance that's, uh, as you can see there, is a pre-existing ordinance that is within the city's municipal code that was established some time ago. And, um, eventually the, the fire chiefs, the, the fire code official has the authority to make any decision on determination as to any appeal process or anything that the individual may not agree with in ordinance, of course. Um, that would come back to chief's decision, of course. But that is something that's already been pre-established in our ordinance and something that we're not modifying in any way right now. So, um, that is part of the Fire Code and part of the existing ordinance.
Uh, this Benson mentions as defined in chapter two of the California Fire Code, um, 2022 edition. Um, and I'm not familiar with those definitions as to exactly what blasting agents are or explosives.
So, um, explosives and blasting agents are defined in chapter two. It doesn't specifically get into the size, the gram, and so forth. Um, it does, they go on in certain chapters of the Fire Code. However, um, the, um, the pre-existing, that's just a definition of itself is, is stated in the code in chapter two. It just defines that it's, it's an explosive and, and blasting agents, um, it just defines that, um, they are, um, they are controlled under a certain chapter in the Fire Code. And, and another chapter in the Fire Code actually controls and specifies what the conditions are if you're going to store, use, or, uh, transport any of that product. That gets much more details in the, in the Fire Code later on. Uh, and, and explosive can be anything from, um, fireworks that are aerial or anything that are used for, um, that are basically used for drilling as well, drilling purposes. A lot of times it uses blasting agents in those instances that we don't have in our city. So, um, by, as a safety standard mechanism, we adopt those. That's just part of the standard of the Fire Code itself.
I guess I would like clarification, at least in the code, that, that some of those items that residents do have in their home, that they're not in violation of any type of a code in regards to firearms and their...
Correct. And blasting agents and, uh, explosives are not something that is really, those are on a commercial scale. That's what they are. They're on a commercial scale use, they're not for small ammunition arms or anything like that, that, uh, that residents are allowed to use in their home or store in their home. Um, so it's not, it has to do with the commercial use of those products.
Okay.
I hope that kind of clarifies a little further.
Uh, it, it clarifies your intent right here, but it's not what it says in the...
I think what Mr. Johnson looking for is just a definitive answer on what, what's allowable in the house, whether it be black powder for, for, you know, for that type of gun or for, uh, you know, cartridges or shotgun shells, uh, or ammunition for a gun that's legally held, I think like that. I, I'm, I'm sure that it probably states in there, but to make sure it doesn't outlaw it.
Correct. Uh, no, under normal use of firearms, it does not allow that at all. The Fire Code is very specific as to the use is more intended for commercial use and commercial storage of these, commercial use of these products that are applied in commercial settings, not in residential or private use of firearms, none whatsoever. That is not specified in the Fire Code whatsoever. The small firearms and the powders used in those ammunitions does not specify that in the Fire Code as far as, um, used in storage. It has to be a certain level, a certain pound that it has to go into a certain level of gunpowder in order for it to be in the commercial setting and application. And that's where the Fire Code really comes in and, uh, controls, specifies how to store and handle those products in, in a setting. And it depends what occupancy you're in and what fire protection equipment is required for storage of those large volumes of those products. So it does not specify, does not refer to small arms ammunition for personal use.
Could we just clarify that in that code, just to make sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you'll give that to council?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think my, my only comment about that was just the same comment that I had made to, um, Attorney Kress, was that when we are seeing these, um, I think it would be helpful when there is a reference to a definition, if that definition could be provided so that we can have this clarification. Um, because, again, I can see where the confusion can come in. I, I read it one way and then it was, because I don't own guns.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, I know that, um, Councilman Johnson does hunt, so, you know, that, that is of a concern to him. So if we can just make sure that there's a red line version or, you know, additional information that can help clarify, that would be, um, I think beneficial for our folks, staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Any other question, it'd be cool to go to public comment. Let's go to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this issue? And we're going to close public comment, bring it back up to the dais. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Crosby?
Uh, thank you for the why it's an urgency. Um, if we always, I just wish we can get it earlier so we could have it the proper reading and proper, uh, timeframe, but I know that's not the case because of the county, not because of, of the city of Laverne and, um, our employees. So just appreciate that. I just don't like to normally do things on urgency, like to go through the proper channels in the proper time, but understand that it was not our doing. So, but thank you for helping us and, uh, letting us know about that.
Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Um, as a contractor, I do appreciate the building codes because it gives us a guide to install correctly, not improperly, and safely. So we protect not only the occupants, we're talking high-rise, low-rise, residential, commercial, and it's very important that we follow these rules. Unfortunately, the, uh, these things run behind. Usually when I'm going by code, it's two to three years difference on code acceptance. So, and the minute you get a set of plans and you go to the next code, and if it's in that timeframe, you bid it this way and then you put the new code, you have to change your method and you have to change your pricing because it changes. But I think it's good. I learned more about geological stuff than I needed to, but, um, I appreciate the fact that we are going to go back, uh, for the Green Building Code and also for the Fire Code. Once those get, once those get in, in the inception, Chief Nick?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, I just want to do clearly, or better define that, in, in that, uh, code 15.32.030, it does state as defined in chapter two. So the totality of the Fire Code and the whole section two of the Fire Code is all of these definitions that will clearly define what blasting caps are and what, uh, allowable quantities are referenced in this particular section. So I know it's not listed directly in here, but in chapter, uh, in chapter two, the whole giant, uh, entire binder, it would define that. Um, and just to elaborate a little bit more on what Fire Marshal Montagami mentioned, um, this is in the commercial setting, and there are, um, areas in the Fire Code that will define what the allowable quantities are of that in the commercial setting. There's really no mechanism for us to go and enforce or even inspect in a residential private setting. So us coming into your house and saying you can and can't have this isn't going to happen. So that's why it's not even relative to this right here. So chapter two should address all of those definitions you were looking for. If that helps.
Thank you very much. So again, Mr. Hollingdon, so the straight, uh, the State Green Building Code and also the Fire Code, once they get, um, adopted, we'll go ahead and, uh...
So this evening, uh, the recommendation is to adopt the state code and the intent is to not bring it back.
Okay.
It's the Fire Code that, uh, we are pending the, uh, county amendments, um, and that will come back sometime, you know, tentatively, we're, we're thinking first quarter.
Good luck with that.
Don't have a date right now for it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
With that, council? Have a motion?
I move to adopt by urgency ordinance number 1114 of the 2023 Los Angeles County Building Code and the 2022 Fire Code and Green Building Code by reference. Second?
I'm second.
Vote please.
I'm not approved by...
Pork roast. Not a fire roast. Okay. We move to public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening? Gary, come on up. How are you?
I want to talk to those folks that are real soon. Right out.
Thank you so much.
I got, uh, three things or a quick ones. The people that lost their house on baseline in the fire last week, is there some place you can donate? I don't like doing it on the internet. You never know where it goes. Does the fire department, police department take enough donations or anything?
I have. I can, I'll talk to y'all.
Well, we can have, talk with the city manager and also, uh, Chief Nick, just to make sure, um, and we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, second one. Uh, Sunday morning, I was walking my dog at 6:30 down in Emerald, and there's a dog laying in the street and couldn't get up, couldn't walk, really skinny, so I picked him up, carried him home, put him in the car, go to the police department. Usually takes dogs there. They don't do it no more. Why is that? Cause I've done it before, total five different times I've taken dogs there, put them in the cage, cause it's Sunday and nothing's open. So anybody from the police department here? Can...
We can talk about it.
Please.
You want to do it after?
Let's do it after we close public comment, but, and we'll, yeah, we'll have them come up and answer that, of course.
Okay. Third, um, your city manager you adopted, within his part here, he's had quite a few jobs all over the place for such a young guy, not there for very long. Is he just going to be a yes guy for you guys or is he going to do what's good for Laverne? It's just, I'm just putting it out there.
We'll, we'll answer that after.
Yeah, and then the last city manager is a big deal about him not living in Laverne. Does this guy live in Laverne?
I'll answer that after too.
I'll go back and shut it.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, we, anybody else who should speak on public comment? We have someone online, Ms. Portchamp.
Wait, let me call her. Oh, she's not there.
No, he probably...
Okay. Thank you. First, I'd like to propose that, um, in the future, we can, um, offer the people who participate in city council meetings, you know, on the YouTube channel, um, maybe there can be a recording device outside, so that they can also watch the tree unit and for other future events, like the laundry presentations, maybe that meeting, the fourth, the city council meeting, you know, the teams are, you know, awards or, um, you know, people are receiving, uh, prestigious honors. I think it's important that they're included in those types of events as well, not just the people who are present in physical form. Um, but anyway, I would like to personally thank Tunde Agadon and the other volunteers for the Reef Across America, City of Laverne's major volunteer, Chief Greeny. Thank you to those who donated financially and also, um, of volunteering time and those who need the one volunteer, but some, I'm sorry, on the 17th, uh, they're going to be placing the reeves and need help with that. Uh, so you can go to the Reef Across America online or Facebook page and contact them if they're encouraged with partnering in the act. I would also like to thank, um, Elizabeth Alghana and me, Fisher. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I have heard from several neighbors that the K9 Foundation Christmas party that was held at the University of Laverne was a constructive event and it was very successful and I'm sad that I wasn't able to go, but, um, for irrigation, but I want to especially thank them. They worked tirelessly on that event and so, um, and I would obviously, it benefits the entire city with the money that they raised for the additional payment that we have. So, um, I just want to thank, thank you for your time. I'm sorry I'm not able to attend this person. I'm sure you're outside my back. I'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? We will close public comment and bring it up to the dais. Did we want to answer the questions first, uh, Gary? Let's answer those questions. Did you, Chief? Chief Lawrence, please. Please.
Good evening, everybody. Good question, Gary. Thank you. So if you follow the police department on social media, for many years, we had a huge campaign of stray animals. We post it, we'd have reunions, it was exciting. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, if anybody remembers, there was a, and we can't remember the name of disease, some, a rabies-type disease was going around with animals. And so it was putting our employees at risk to accept them because what happens is, is people are in a rush and they drop the animal off at the front in the lobby, and then that has our records clerk, they stop working and then they deal with the animals, get them through the station, and then we have a cage in the back. So we had to stop that part. I think that disease... I think that disease has gotten under control since then, but we do contract with the Inland Valley Humane Society and they do, that's part of their deal is they'll come out and get animals. If it's, it may take a while, might not be urgent, but I will share the number that we use for them. It's 909-594-9858, or you can call the police department as well and connect you to them. But it's a practice we unfortunately had to stop doing and many police departments have. We were one of the last ones that were still doing it.
And he said his problem was on Sunday, whether he may say it'll be open on Sundays?
Or dangerous animals typically, but that's about it. So, and we still can't, it's not our business to collect dogs and stray cats.
That's an emergency number, 24 hours.
Oh, this is the emergency number it gave out. So maybe they'll come?
Perfect.
We have a great relationship with the Inland Valley Humane Society, so hopefully...
No, we always have, and I think it's important, it's just, it's upsetting when you have an animal that's in distress, you know, but I think we need to repost that, make sure that Humane Society is known, and they do give us very good service.
Oh, they do. Agreed.
Very good service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Back a number of meetings ago, we decided that it was kind of cumbersome as far as the city manager living in the city that they work in. So we just scratched that, so that was not part of our, our deal.
Yeah, all wrong to begin with.
Well, you know, and as far as how many jobs the city manager, we had a number of candidates come in and the city managers are generally afforded, well, three to six years, is that correct? Three to six years tenure. And I think we chose the finest candidate and I think he's going to do a super good job and I think he'll be here for a while. But Gary, as you know, nothing's for sure. But I think in Mr. Domer, we hired an excellent city manager. I know it's hard to replace Jess, but we're going to try. And, but yeah, that's, we're very confident. He's got a great past. He's done some fine work and I think he's excited to be here and I just think he's going to be a very good manager. So you'll have to trust our counsel, our decision. We spent, I haven't mentioned this before, but we, we spent many, many hours on reviewing candidates and a lot of hours and reviewing many, but our staff put together a fine combination of good managers from all over. And it was a very difficult decision, but at the end, he rose to the top and, but I want to thank our counsel and also our staff for giving us such great candidates, but also for the time put into it to really make that decision. And it was a five to zero vote that was in favor, so we're very confident, very happy to have him on board and he's excited to be here. He even came to the, to the tree lighting ceremony down in Manero Square, which, with his family. So that's a testament to, he's really excited to come here, so. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
And we'll figure out the dog thing. That's, that's very disturbing. Close public comment. We already closed. We were just talking. Counsel comments, come on up. Who wants to speak first?
I'll go first.
Mr. Cash?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I wanted to ask, answer the last part was your question about the Sahakian family that I went down to, that lived on baseline. I went down the following day to check on them, see what we could do. Community is very important to me and I asked Vache, the homeowner that was there, and he just texted me. So they're doing, they're doing good. They're staying at the families, all the family in the house and him and his wife and son are safe. And I want to thank first and foremost God for nothing happened to them and I thank the fire department for their immediate and rapid response. It was, it was amazing response to see. It was a very big fire. And most important thing, like I told Mr. Sahakian that it is, at least they're okay. So they created a GoFundMe page. I'll talk to your city manager or city attorney, see if there's something I can share on the city side. I'll be sharing online, social media side. I, you mentioned, you know, not doing it electronically. That's the best way, only way I know how, sir. I'm sorry. But share with you. We can give them a call and contact them and maybe set up a meeting to talk. Feel good? All right, sir. And that's all I have.
Your Counselor, Mr. Cash.
But I did go to Manero Square.
Yes, you did. You gave me the cash.
Started that, did a minute with the mayor and I just flipped the cash and not as good a luck, but I tried, tried to do that and I had that hype, you know? But after that, we went to the K-9 Foundation. Yes, it was an amazing time. It was amazing to see so many people that were there and the great gifts and the donations and the raffles and the food and it was just a great time. So I couldn't stay too long. You can't come back out for the tree lighting ceremony, which I saw a lot of great people. I mean, this, it was the first time in a long time I actually seen the city of Laverne so full. I, I mean, right after that, we walked around and just tried to get a dinner somewhere. It was like an hour wait. I had never seen that. I haven't seen that in years. So it was really good to see and I hope we can keep that momentum going, seeing all the businesses open and just people just coming back together. And I'm really thankful for that, so I hope we continue that going and I look forward to seeing you guys here in City of Laverne. So that is all for me.
Thank you, Counselor Cash. Counselor Johnson?
I really appreciate everybody up here on the dais. You know, selecting the city manager, that was a very good process. You did well. I want to thank Bob Cress and Jess up for your time on the dais with me as well. There'll be a transition in our next meeting, but I wanted to say thank you.
Counselor La?
Thank you. Yeah, it's a work. I just wanted to say it's been a very busy December already and we're only on the fifth day of the month. And I'm sure all of you have similar situations where you've got family obligations, you've got work obligations, you've got a million people peeling you in a million different directions. And so I just wanted to send a reminder that, you know, set your boundaries. It's okay to say no. The people who love you will understand, but take that time for yourself because it can get pretty hectic around this time. So make sure that you're taking care of yourself and looking after, after you because it's just like they tell you on the plane, if you don't put your oxygen mask on first, you can't help anyone else. So please look out for yourself, but also, you know, please look out for others. I know this is a happy time for a lot of people, but it's a pretty sad time for others. And so, you know, to the extent that you can extend a welcoming hand or extend your kindness and compassion, you know, that is always appreciated, but I think especially appreciated during this time. And we do have great partners in Tri-City Mental Health and in other resources so that if you know of anybody in need or if you are in need, there are resources available to make sure that you are okay, not just during this holiday season, but throughout the year. So I hope you have an enjoyable December. I know it goes by really, really fast and sometimes we're jumping from one event to another. So just take a minute to, you know, appreciate who you're with and when you're with them. So be kind and have a good week.
Mayor Pro Tim Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. About the fire and thank you for that report back. I just want to thank Fire Chief Nick. Because of him and his working, we could have the auto aid with LA County Fire. And talking with our firefighters on Saturday, we had the appropriate number of personnel with the assistance of LA County Fire. First call, then they're out there to help it, or it would have been much more devastating than it already, already was. So thank you for giving all of our city the safety and the first time ever having automatic aid with LA County Fire. The police and fire station, if you guys all could go down and the work that they did of just volunteers, different police in their family and fire in their family went and decorated the stations down Station 1. So go down and see the work they've done. They're having a little contest back and forth of who can light up more. I think before Christmas, it's going to be the Griswold Happy House down there, but they've done an excellent job. And really, it shows the teamwork that our firefighters and our police in bringing out their families on their day off and really come out and showing spirit for our city. So I really do appreciate that. We did rededicate Manero Square in honor of Skip Manero back and, and his family, Andy Manero and his family came out, was part of our presentation. So really thank Andy for his dad and how much he gave to Laverne and the University of Laverne and his, Andy's kids and wife were there and to really see it too. So that was very nice. Yvonne Duran, you guys did an amazing job out there tonight with Santa, but out there with the pictures with Santa and doing that and Eric Shear and his department really with Manero Square. And so really appreciate that. And George Henderson, reading 'Twas the Night Before Christmas. Yes, I said Henderson. I mispronounced his name the other day and I'm so, so sorry, but George did a great job in reading it in front.
What was, what was it?
Henderson.
What was it that you said?
I said Harrison.
Four.
Yes. He was rocking out.
I'm not blaming you.
Joe, thank you for pushing us. We had a light up on the flag. You go outside, you'll see the light up on the building to the flag and Joe, that's because of you and you kept pushing. And thank you so much for getting that done. Today, this morning, I'm part of the Foothill Transit Governing Board and today, this morning, the first hydrogen fuel bus was on the road. And it started at Chase's in Laverne. We had, they had a little ceremony and where they brought the governing board, the executive board got to ride on the bus for the first time and it's going to be starting, coming on our route, the hydrogen bus. So it's new fuel and it's got a lot more green and it's not having all the toxins and all the other stuff going around. I don't have all the specs on it, but you'll be seeing it around. And so, though it started here in, in Laverne today and we have our next meeting coming up to celebrate a very great career, Mr. Cress, and the great support that you've given us, Mr. Duff, and meeting the new city manager, Mr. Domer, coming up on the 19th. And we look forward to that. So thank you.
Thank you all. I will say that I, Mr. Cress, we, we had a rocky start at first when we first started, but I appreciate everything you do. Yeah, that's true. I'm a planning commissioner. No, I, you've spent many years here and you've given us great advice and I appreciate what you've given to this community. You do care. You live here. So everything you do has a heart behind it and we do appreciate that. Mr. Duff, we do appreciate your time here and it's been, it's been a nice transition and I can't thank you guys enough for, yeah, for being here. But I do want to thank Community Services Manager Yvonne Duran. You knocked it out of the park tonight. And also the police department and the fire department. Those kids were so excited. Although we might have to work on the backing up of police vehicle, but other than that, I think we're fine. We weren't sure if Mrs. Claus was ever going to get out of there. But I just, that's the part of our employees that a lot of people don't know, that they're the, they're the salt behind this whole community and we really appreciate that because they make things happen. And the same thing like Manero Square where the public works, everybody loves what they're doing and that's the wonderful thing about Laverne. So thank you all very much. Also, this is a, this is a time where you, as Counselor La said, you know, there's a lot of things going on, but always take time to smell the roses and check out the Christmas lights in Laverne. Just go through and just have, just enjoy it for a moment because we are busy, but you know what? Never too busy to, to that. And also, if you have extra dinner, if you have extra time, give it to those that don't have it. Connect with your families. It's very important, very, very important. And fire stations, you guys are doing good. I went down on Station 1 tonight and they've got some decorations up, so. And the Public Safety Building, I haven't checked out two yet because it wasn't light up, but I'm sure they've got some decorations on it too. So all of you between police and fire, I love it. What's that?
Three, having a competition.
One, two, and I haven't seen, yeah, I've seen, three, no, three's good. I haven't seen two yet. One's great, so we'll have to check it out. We'll give you our final, final countdown. But everybody's starting to decorate in Laverne, so it's just a wonderful place to cruise around with the kids and the grandkids and take a look, smell the roses. It's very important. And also, as Dinya Boacham said and also Mayor Pro Tim Crosby, there are about 270 reeds now and they have about 80 to go for the Reeds Across America, which is the 17th. And that's going to be at 9:00 AM over at Laverne Cemetery. So I would suggest if you have that extra, I think it's, was it $17 a reed to please donate. I think it's a great cause, so it would be nice if we could do that. And we have, again, we must remember we have the Winter Wonderland this Saturday. There's lots of functions. There's lots of concerts. There's the Laverne Historical Society, the Heritage Foundation. There's just stuff rocking in this town. Let's try to enjoy it if you can because that's the best time of year right now. This week is packed with fun-filled stuff and the following reeds. So I think the most important thing is be safe, enjoy your family and thank you all. Thank you for being here. Our next city, regular city council, we hope to be on December 19th at 6:30 PM. Everybody have a great week. We are adjourned.